Okay, the meeting is live. Mayor, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the specially called meeting of the mayor and Board of Trustees for the Village of Woodridge on this Tuesday, October 27, 2020. The time is 6:01 PM, and we call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Cruzek.
Present.
Trustee Page.
Present.
Trustee Hendricks.
Present.
Trustee Blair.
Present.
Trustee Martinez.
Present, but you cannot hear me.
Madam Mayor.
Present. The purpose of tonight's meeting, we do have a quorum, thank you. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to review and discuss potential village-sponsored restaurant financial relief grant programs that would be consistent federal CARES Act funding guidelines. And I would like to invite our staff for our presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham. Members of the board, good evening. Assistant Village Administrator Halleck is going to take you through a presentation, which is a continuation of the last study session that you had on this topic. In terms of formatting tonight, what we're suggesting is that staff would go through the presentation. And then, Mayor, if it's okay with you, there would then be an opportunity for board discussion, questions, deliberation. Then, we would go into public comment. And then, from public comment, we would turn it back over to you and the board for further additional questions, discussion, and ultimately, your direction for staff.
Yes, thank you very much, Administrator Stonehenge.
Well, thanks, everybody, for getting together tonight for the specially called meeting. We're here to talk about a potential restaurant relief program. Next slide. So just to kind of give a recap of where we were at the October 15 meeting, at that time, the Village Board discussed a potential program to support restaurants and small businesses. And the board went through a really nice discussion about the totality of what those programs might look like, and asked us to gather a little bit more information and then bring that forward to the November 5 meeting. Well, in the meantime, Region 8 was placed under more severe restrictions as a result of positivity increases. And as of Friday, our restaurants were closed to indoor dining. And as a result of that, the board really felt like it was necessary to fold a specially called meeting to take more immediate action with respect to restaurants specifically. We are still working on a program related to small businesses, as the board asked, and we'll bring that forward to you hopefully within the next week or so. Next slide. So just to kind of, again, recap from the last meeting, under the CARES Act allocation through DuPage County, Woodridge was allocated $1.7 million for eligible reimbursement. When we came to you on the 15th, our understanding was that there were some limitations in terms of what we could reimburse in terms of internal expenses. And as a result, we believe that we would have $1.4 million in eligible expenses, leaving about $200,000 to be used to support small businesses and restaurants. Since that time, and I think, in fact, maybe the following morning after our meeting, we received additional guidance that told us that we actually could receive reimbursement for all of our police eligible services, which allowed us to use the full allocation of $1.7 million. And under board direction, we submitted for that reimbursement to the county, I believe, last week. So we are coming to you, again, with programs to support restaurants. And these programs would be, what we're hopeful of is that these would be funded under the DuPage County supplemental funding for CARES Act. So we would submit, if the board is interested in pursuing any or all of these programs, we would submit them to the county for reimbursements. I do want to clarify, though, that it does not know whether or not those would be reimbursed. So as the board is deliberating on how to move forward, I just would ask that you keep that in mind. We certainly will submit it for reimbursement, but we can't say for certain that it would be eligible for reimbursement. Next slide, please. So just to share that we have been doing a significant amount of business outreach in the community, we've been staying in very close contact with our restaurants to understand what their plans are in terms of trying to continue to operate and to understand what kind of expenses they've incurred. We've been updating our village website and other social media posts in order to keep the community informed, both the business community and our residents, about what restrictions are in place and what sort of funding opportunities are available as well. And we have been, we have been highlighting the financial programs that are available at the federal, state, and county levels. Next slide, please. So I just want to kind of walk through with you some of the funding opportunities that have already been provided. There was the PPP award program, which you are all familiar with. We had a significant number of Woodridge businesses who submitted and were awarded dollars under that program. Those are listed in that second column under Woodridge PPP awards. It gives you a sense of how many businesses and what types of ranges of awards we'll give them. Next slide, please. There have also been state and county grants as well. There was the State Business Interruption Grant, the BIG grant. We had four businesses who were eligible for that, who received funding for that, I should say, under the BIG award one. There was a second BIG award, which was really designated for down states and for areas that were especially hard events. So those are not, our businesses are not eligible for that grant. There was the Choose DuPage Small Business Grant Relief, the round one that occurred in August. Then, we had 28 businesses in Woodridge who were recipients of dollars through that grant. And they were, by and large, salons and service industry-type businesses. So a lot of hair salons, a lot of dentist offices, things like that. Just today, DuPage County enrolled the Choose DuPage Small Business Grant Relief Program Two, Round Two. There had not been any awards as yet. They opened that program at 1:30 this afternoon. My understanding is it's closed. They had $2.5 million allocated. It was a first-come, first-served basis. And our understanding is that they have now closed that program. Next slide, please. So just want to give you kind of a sense of our restaurants by the numbers. So we have 49 restaurants in the community. And I do want to clarify, when I say restaurants, I am including Skeleton Key. I, we do have 27 restaurants that are what I would define as independently owned and operated, so they're not part of a national corporation or franchisee of a national corporation. We have 25 restaurants in total that we are estimating, so this is subject to review, but we're estimating that about 25 of them would derive 60% of their sales from on-premise dining. We have 26 on-premise liquor license holders. We have 21 restaurant liquor license holders. So the difference between that, the five additional include Seven Bridges Golf Club, Village Greens, Bobak's, Bolero, and Hollywood Boulevard. And then, we have 19 non-corporator franchisee liquor license holders. Next slide, please. I apologize if this is a really small chart. I was trying to pull things in from Excel, and it doesn't necessarily come in that great. What I'm showing you here are all 49 restaurants in Woodridge. And I've separated them based on whether they're national corporations or franchises of national corporations, or whether they're what we're calling independently-owned. In that first column, I just want to identify that we have, I think, six restaurants that are in kind of a darker shade of purple font. Those represent the restaurants that, it's my understanding, are corporate-owned restaurants. They're not franchises. That would be subject to review, but that's my best understanding of the corporate makeup. In the independently-owned category, I just want to point out a couple of things. Number one, we have moved Jamison's from the national corporation over to independently-owned based on the explanation of ownership structure that they provided to us this morning. Their explanation to us is that this is a family-owned business. They own several restaurants, but it is a family-owned business, not a national corporation or a franchisee. Excuse me. And then, I have asterisks next to the restaurants that have more than one restaurant, not necessarily in Woodridge and not necessarily of the same name. So we have Aurelio's, Doggy Diner, El Barito Loco, Jam &amp; Jelly, Legends, Jamison's, Pepe's, and I think that's it. Oh, I'm sorry, Whiskey Hill Brewing, which is a Salerno company. So those are ones that they have, they're independently-owned, but they do have more than one restaurant in the Chicago area. Next slide, please. And please, if anybody has any questions, as we're going through, don't go right ahead and ask them. So this slide is really just our best estimate of what restaurants would likely derive 60% or more of their sales from on-premise dining. I've highlighted in green the ones that are a little uncertain as to whether or not they do. But again, this would be determined by restaurants and not by the village. But I just wanted to kind of point out, this is our best understanding of who might qualify under 60% of sales from on-premise dining. That second column is the corporate-owned or franchise restaurants, Baker Square, Buffalo Wild Wings, Carrabba's Noodles, and Panera. Next slide, please. This is just a listing of all of our on-premise liquor license holders. No, I'm sorry, this is a list of all of our restaurant liquor license holders, okay? And again, it is separated between non-corporate and corporate. Next slide. So just want to talk through some different financial relief options. These are just options, and it is entirely the board's discretion as to what, if anything, we would like to do. These are just ideas. They can be changed however you would like. The first is very much like we presented last time. This is a liquor license fee rebate, and it would rebate the 2021 liquor license fee. And I will say, I had been telling you that $2,600 was the average license cost. It is, in fact, the cost for every license, with the exception of, I can't know who has a different license category, that costs $3,100. So the estimated cost to reimburse those, or to rebate those license fees would range between $45,500 and $66,300. Option two would be a grant program for capital expenses related to COVID. And again, this can be defined however the board wants. What we have put together is just a grant program that would reimburse up to a maximum of $15,000 for capital expenses from eligible restaurants. And we'll talk further about what you consider to be eligible restaurants. So the estimated cost for that program is $50,000 to $90,000. Trustee Page made an excellent comment or question this morning in terms of this. This is entirely an estimate. If, in fact, every restaurant that was eligible submitted a grant request in the full amount, this could cost up to, I think we showed, it could cost up to nearly $300,000. So this is just an estimate based on what we have seen in the community in terms of what the restaurants have done. Option three is a grant program related to operating expenses. So this was trying to be responsive to the board's concern that not everybody had significant costs related to trying to make capital modifications of their restaurants, but they still were hit as a result of the closing of indoor dining. And so, this expansion is intended to address that. And under this grant program, it reimbursed up to a maximum of $5,000 per restaurant for eligible operating expenses. And we'll go into that a little bit further as well. The cost range is estimated for that between $95,000 and $130,000. And then, finally, we have option four, which is a gift card program. This would be for us to purchase and then distribute gift cards from restaurants throughout the community. We're suggesting that we, that program might fund at least $1,000 in terms of purchasing gift cards. Next slide, please. So under the liquor license rebate program, the idea behind that is that the liquor license is a significant outlay of dollars for the restaurants. It's one of their larger outlays, certainly with the village. And because of the restrictions in terms of indoor dining and COVID generally, the ROI on that purchase was certainly not as high this year as it has been in any other year for our restaurants. And so, the idea was to, if you rebated that, that would be a sizable reimbursement to the businesses to assist with their continuation. There are different ways that you could approach that, so I'm just going to walk through those three different approaches. One would be to rebate all on-premise liquor license holders. And so, that would include Seven Bridges Golf Club, Village Greens Golf Course, Hollywood Boulevard, Bobak's, and Bolero, because they all hold on-premise liquor licenses as well. Another option would be to exclude them, but to still include your corporate, national franchise, or national corporate, and then franchisees, which would be Buffalo Wild Wings and Carrabba's. And then, the third option would be only to rebate it to locally-owned or independently-owned liquor license holders. Next slide, please. But maybe I should stop there. Are there any questions related to the liquor license rebate program or any comments that you'd like to share? Okay, I don't see any, so I'll hold on. So we have, we talked just briefly about the various, the two different grant programs that we're talking about. And I do, I'm not asking you for you to answer these yes or no right now. I just want you to think about them. So as we're going, as we're thinking about the potential grant programs, what we'll need to decide is eligibility requirements. So maybe the first question that makes sense to answer is, do you want to restrict grant eligibility to those restaurants that have, and I'm saying 60%, just trying to get to a majority. 60% or more of their food and beverage sales are derived from on-premise dining. The idea behind that is, with the closure of indoor dining, that is, that is what kind of prompted you to have this conversation, is that the restaurants who lost their indoor dining have been harmed or financially harmed as a result of those restrictions. And so, that is the reasoning behind setting an eligibility based on the impact from a restriction on indoor dining. And what would happen is that those restaurants that do not derive 60% or more of their income from food and beverage sales, from on-premise food and beverage sales, would not be included in the grant programs. And you could, this, this, when you're thinking about this, you can think about it for both option two and option three. You can set different criteria for both of those options. They don't have to be the same. The second one is to think about, are you restricting this to independently-owned and-operated non-franchised restaurants? So if you are, that would, that would make ineligible those restaurants that are franchisees, or that are franchises of a national chain or a national corporate stores. Another question to think about is, are you making any restrictions based on prior grant funding that restaurants might have received? Because I'm just sharing that with you, because on your some grant programs, that is a restriction. Often, it's a restriction if they receive grant programs from that taxing body or that government level. But I just want to, I just want to share it with you in case that's something that you wanted to think about. And then, what we're seeing with a lot of the grant programs, including the DuPage County Choose DuPage Grant Program that was released today, is that they are on a first-come, first-served basis. So a pool of money is identified. So in Choose DuPage example, they had $2.5 million. That was the pool. It was a first-come, first-served basis. As soon, as soon as the $2.5 million limit was reached, the program was closed. And then, a final, this isn't necessarily an eligibility requirement. I just wanted to make sure I didn't forget to share it with you, is it's really staff's recommendation under these grant programs, that we bring in our outside auditor to assist us with this program, just given staffing levels at this time and kind of the assessment that needs to be done with each of these applications. We think that would be appropriate.
Excuse me, Peggy?
Yes?
Do we know how much that would cost? Do we have a ballpark figure? I know it's probably going to be dependent on the amount of work that they do, but do we have a ballpark figure for that? For the audit firm?
I'm just looking to Nadine. I don't know if we have a...
Nadine, I think Nadine's on the line as well. We don't have that yet, Mike, but I suspect that they, we have given us an hourly rate from Lauderbach and Amen, who is our auditors. And, but depending on the board's direction tonight, we could come back and at least give you a better sense of what the overall cost is likely to be.
Okay, thank you.
Nadine, do you have any other comments?
No, I was going to look up the hourly rate that they quoted us, but we would have to, as you said, Al, depends on the depth of the program, what we would need. I'll see if I can find the hourly rate.
And Trustee Krusik, if I may, it's important to note that the auditing firm expense is also CARES Act eligible. Every county, including the state of Illinois, and I think even the city of Chicago, has oftentimes used third-party administrators for these grant programs, and they are eligible for CARES Act reimbursement.
Okay. While I have you, Al, one other quick question. The supplemental CARES Act funding that we would be looking for to see if this is part, if it qualifies, that was not affected by the 2.5 million that the county just put out today, was it? Do we know?
I have not heard that it's been affected. And I'll ask Director Leto if she's heard anything differently as well.
I have not. It should be over and above, it was additional dollars that they had allocated leftover.
Okay, thank you.
And also, auditor costs would be $65 to $85 an hour, depending on the scope of services.
Peggy, where did, it's Trustee Page. Where did the 60% percentile come from versus 40%? How did we decide 60 was the proper percentage?
Yeah, and really, I was just looking for a majority of the sales coming from that. The board can set the percentage at whatever level that deemed appropriate. Interesting. Okay, next slide, please. So option two is the capital expense grant that we talked about. So that is really the program that we talked about at the October 15 meeting. This would reimburse capital expenses up to a maximum of $15,000. Some examples of reimbursable, eligible reimbursement would be tents, tables, heaters, shields, infiltration systems, I'm sorry, excuse me, filtration systems. We're not trying to support infiltration. UV systems as well. We are estimating, and again, I appreciate Trustee Page identifying this, we are estimating, estimate only, that this would cost between $90,000 and $125,000. I would strongly encourage the board to set a limit on this, rather than just making it $15,000 as the eligibility per restaurant, because we just don't have a good sense. We couldn't know what would be requested and what would make the cut. So we really are suggesting that the board set a specific pool of money towards this program, and then make a determination as to whether or not you're going to award that on a first-come, first-served basis, or if you would assess each application on its face, or award on a proportionate basis, or however the board might choose. And then, would you restrict this program only to those who have 60% on-premise dining? And again, if 60% isn't the right percentage, that can be set at whatever percent you care to have set up.
Peggy, can I, about how many restaurants would be included if we went with 60% on-premise?
Well, it depends on if you include the corporate-owned. I'm just trying to go back to my...
There's really just two of those that would fall into it, right? It would just be Carrabba's and Buffalo Wild Wings, correct?
We had estimated that there are 25 that would drive 60% or more. So about half.
Okay. And what's that, what is the pool of money that we're looking at to use?
Well, we're estimating between, can we run back to that slide? We were estimating...
Peggy, do you remember which slide that was?
Let me just... It is, sorry. Slide 14? We're estimating $90,000 to $125,000.
Is what we have, what we have to distribute, or what it's got? I'm looking what we have to distribute.
Well, the board can set whatever amount they want. What we were, what we were estimating in terms of what would be requested is $90,000 to $125,000. So I think we would say be somewhere in that range. If you want to set a pool, set a pool somewhere in that range. If you want to go a little bit higher.
That's what we have left from the CARES money, the money that we received. This is the balance. That's, I guess, what I'm looking for, is the balance that we have left.
Let me just clarify. So there is no balance left from the money that was allocated to Woodridge. The full $1.7 million that was allocated to Woodridge was submitted for reimbursement, because we received information that we could be reimbursed for expanded police services. So the dollars that we're talking about, we would submit those to the county for reimbursement under the supplemental program. And there isn't a set amount that's allocated under that supplemental.
If we don't get the supplemental program, it would come out of the general revenue fund?
Correct.
And Peggy, one question for you. Sorry, Trustee Martinez. Option two, I'm looking at the memo. You estimated $50,000 to $75,000, and this version is 90,000 to 125,000. Is it because we think people will submit higher? Sorry, go ahead.
But if we go to the next slide, I think it will help.
Could I, could you stay in the slide for a minute? All right. So the first line, you said, up to $15,000 maximum per restaurant, right?
Correct.
And then, the third line down, you say, cost between $90,000 and $125,000. So if we submit $15,000, that's only six restaurants, seven restaurants at the most, maybe eight. So I'm a little confused on the allocation of money versus how we figure out what to give to these restaurants.
Sure. And that's really just based on our best estimate from what restaurants have told us they spent.
Trustee Martinez, if I may, what Peggy, in the conversation she's had with some of the restaurant owners is, who have been very transparent with us, not every one of them who might be on this list would have $15,000 worth of hard expenses for tents, tables, heaters, or shields, because they didn't necessarily incur that expense to adapt their operations. So that's where Assistant Village Administrator Halleck is saying, we know that some aren't going to likely apply for the $15,000. If we wanted to assume a, I'll call it a worst-case scenario, and every one of those would submit for $15,000, my suggestion to the board was establish a budget. Let's just, whatever budget you're comfortable with, be it $200,000, $150,000, first-come, first-served basis. Let's see who comes in, applies, and if we allocate the money. And we can always come back to you as a board and say, look, we're out of money. This is how much we've used. This is who didn't, this is who applied but wasn't eligible. And you all can make it a determination. Do you want to allocate an additional tranche of budget dollars?
Okay, thanks.
And then, Trustee...
Go ahead.
Trustee Page, to your question, I'm sorry, Trustee Martinez, did you have another question?
No, I was just saying, that answered my question. That's fine.
Trustee Page, to your question, I think that this $90,000 to $125,000 on this slide is a carryover from another slide. So if we go to the next slide, it's really a $50,000 to $90,000. And the reason why it went up to $90,000 was because it added in some restaurants that had previously included. So if the board, if you wanted to follow this, kind of this as a guideline, you might set, you might set the limit at $100,000. And as Al said, then if we, if you don't choose to do the first-come, first-served, or if you do, and additional applications come in that didn't get awarded, you could make a determination to add dollars to this.
Could we also, I'm sorry, could we also look at it as we have set a pool? Could we also, I'm sorry, could we also look at it as we have set a pool of money? We don't necessarily make it first come, first served, but we have a limit as to when they can get their applications in. And then if we need to just prorate it based on the amount of money that we have.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one question. In regards to, just clarifying where the money's coming from again. Is this money that we already have, or is this money that we're requesting?
So let me answer that one, trustee Hendricks. So, and Director Leto's on the line here, I know trustee Abbott earlier today, you had a question about, similar to trustee Hendricks on the CARES Act and the dollars. And as Administrator Halleck, Assistant Administrator Halleck outlined. We have submitted for the full 1.7 million in our allotment of CARES Act eligible dollars. We know that we did not have necessarily a 1.7 million in hard, hard costs where we incurred or overtime expenses incurred. What the federal treasury guidance has allowed for, for municipalities, is to use your base salary and your payroll costs. And to assume that all of your public safety time during a specific period of time during COVID was spent and allocated towards COVID-related response. So we received, you know, quite a majority of our allotment towards public safety salaries, right? Not overtime, but just already sunk costs. So Director Leto, if you could, do you have at your disposal, just kind of a line item, a little bit to answer trustee Hendricks' question?
I do. So if you're excluding the personnel that you just spoke of, Administrator Stonich, we've had hard costs for commodities of about $80,000 to date. We're expecting another $15,000 to $20,000 max through the end of the year, that might even be a little bit high. And then capital expenses of 357,000. So our actual additional costs for COVID were about $500,000. Of which we received 1.7 million, the bulk of that, as Administrator Stonich has mentioned, it's, actually all of it was for personnel-related expenditures. Which were already normal expenditures in the budget.
So, okay, so back to Cameron's question. So if we don't have the 300,000 or 150,000, or whatever amount it comes out to be. Because that county will not, doesn't approve it. And we're having this discussion about creating this opportunity for restaurants. Where would that money come from?
It would come from the general fund, but we've received approximately $1.2 million from the county that is added to the general fund. And we've, in addition, because we've only spent 500,000 of additional costs out of our general fund for COVID-related expenditures.
So I just want to make sure that if we make any kind of commitment, that the money's available somewhere, somehow.
Yes, it would be in the general fund. So right now, what this is serving to do is offset the deficit in the general fund that we were anticipating for budget purposes.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, so 500,000 we already have in costs, there's still 1.2 that's available. And if we don't utilize that 1.2, I mean, it would basically go back to the county, or?
No, we submitted it for payroll expenses, so our public safety costs were 100% reimbursable. So as far as CARES Act goes, we've tapped those dollars, we've pulled them in. And if we're ever audited or anything, it has to do with our public safety costs. So that's our money to keep, we don't have to give it back. So now what we're, what we're doing is, is you now are free to do any kind of program you'd like to put together without restrictions that CARES Act provided. So now, because this is really coming from the village. And so that's separate, we received the $1.7 million from our payroll expenses. If you wanted to talk about how much in addition to the budget that COVID actually cost us in commodities and capital, it was about 500,000. So that leaves 1.2 million of cash that was brought into the general fund this year.
Ultimately, I don't see that there's a huge difference here, because we were going to spend whatever we were going to spend on the restaurant program. Prior to finding out that we could get the whole 1.7 million upfront. So I don't see, it's basically still, it's coming from either one pocket or the other, it's just that now we have the 1.7 million. And we're still looking at how much are we going to spend for the restaurant relief program.
Correct.
And it doesn't matter to me if it's coming from the general fund, because the money is in the general fund now, already, because we got the 1.7 million.
We haven't received it yet, we've applied for it.
But I, okay, but I guess, I mean, it's, we have eligible expenses that they're going to be giving us the whole amount for.
Correct.
Can I, can I just, I don't know how fellow trustees, but you know, in my mind, this would make it easier for me. If first, we decided exactly what restaurants are eligible. Like a number, okay? I mean, I'm looking at one of the graphs that was sent out, and the local independently owned, there's like 19 of them. And then on the other side, you've got, you know, you've got Carrabba's and Jamison's on the other side. I think, for, in my mind, to me, it would be easier if we said, okay, we have 25 restaurants that we consider eligible. And then work from there. I kind of feel like it would be easier that way, rather than, you know, trying to add, you know, we're just speculating. How many restaurants do we have, and then how much can we afford to give them, or do we want to just reimburse, do we want to give them something over and above? It would be easier in my mind if I knew exactly how many establishments we were dealing with.
Phil, do you want to go back to slide seven, please?
That's what I'm looking at, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, but there's a lot of.
Phil, can you go back one? Okay, so here are the, here are the restaurants by the numbers. Trustee Blair?
Yes.
49 restaurants in town.
Right.
27 of them are independently owned, what we're defining is independently owned and operated. And by that, we mean they are not corporate stores, they are not national corporate stores, and they are not corporate franchises. Okay, and just to be clear, Jamison's was moved over to this column.
Right.
Okay, so there's 27 that would fall under this list.
So, but then you go one down, and?
One down, that is all of our restaurants in town, including corporate and franchises. But only those that derive 60% or greater of their sales from on-premise dining.
I guess what I'm asking is, line two, 27 independently owned and operated. And you can throw Jamison's in, you know, make it 28. How many of their 27 derive 60% of their sales from in-dining? Because I, you know, my guess is some of the pizza establishments, most of their sales are carryout anyway. So I guess that's my question, how many of this 27 are 60% of their sales on-premise, or 70, whatever the board decides, you know, would be it, but I guess that's what I would like to know.
It's 20.
20. So that includes Jamison's?
It does.
Carrabba's, how about Carrabba's?
I'm sorry?
Jamison's and Carrabba's.
Carrabba's is a national franchise.
But we can choose to include them if we wanted to, correct?
You'd include them, but you could not just include them, you would have to include all corporate, national corporate franchises with 60% or greater on-premise dining. So that's what the additional five restaurants are.
Okay, so that would be then what you'd probably have to include Baker Square, Buffalo Wild Wings?
Yeah, if we can just go to slide nine. So it adds in Baker Square, Buffalo Wild Wings, Carrabba's, Noodles, and Panera.
Okay. So then it would be 25 total?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And I have one quick, like, housekeeping question, just in regards to how, would they still apply for a license, they purchase it, and then we would go ahead and reimburse them, or how would it work process-wise?
For the liquor license, are you talking?
Correct, yes.
So they've already paid their liquor license, this would be a rebate of the liquor license that we're paying.
All right, perfect.
Any other questions before I move on? Okay, yeah, thank you. Phil, let me just point you to where we should go. If we can go back to slide 15. Thank you. So the capital expense grant program, if we were only to include the independently owned and operated, we're estimating that cost to be 60 to $80,000. If it included only those who had on-premise dining, of the independently owned and operated, only those with on-premise dining, we would estimate that to be about 50 to 75,000. And if you expanded it, so it was all restaurants that had 60% or more on-premise, we would estimate between 50 and 90,000. Again, this is an estimate, and if this is a program that the board wanted to pursue. What my recommendation would be is that you set a pool, and you set that pool wherever you think it's appropriate. I would say, I probably wouldn't, I would set it at about 100,000. If we think we're going to spend about 90,000, 100,000 should probably get us all of the restaurant covered that we think would submit. Next slide, please. Option three is on the other side, this is the operating expense grant, so there was a concern on the part of the board that, we've got some restaurants that maybe didn't have to make significant capital investments in their restaurant, but they certainly took a hit as a result of indoor dining being closed. And so that's what this program is meant to reimburse for. This would provide a grant up to $5,000 for restaurants. And some examples of eligible reimbursement items would include rent, utilities, payroll, marketing, technology. I would say, really with, I'm not a gambling person, but I would bet that every restaurant in town spent at least $5,000 through these categories, and would be eligible to seek reimbursement for it, and likely would. So based on that, we're estimating that that cost is between 90 and 125,000. The board, again, could set a specific pool of money towards this program. Although if you, if you know who you're, what universe you're including. You'll know what your ultimate possible expense is, and that's that 90 to 125, and the next slide will show us a little bit more how I came up with those numbers. And again, on this, you could do, if need be, if you set a, if you set a pool that was less than the total possible amount. You could set this up on a first, first come, first served basis for award, so that you don't exceed the pool. Again, you could restrict this to only restaurants with on-premise dining as well. And make a determination as to whether or not national corporations and franchises are eligible. Next slide, please. So this is just a breakdown of that, if you, if you wanted to pursue this program, and you only wanted to include restaurants that are independently owned and operated. And you had no restrictions in terms of dining, the cost of that program is $135,000. That's 27 restaurants at $5,000 these. If you wanted to restrict that a little bit more, and you said, well, really, we're trying to address those who were impacted by on-premise dining restrictions. You could restrict it based on that 60%, that cost would be $100,000. And if you wanted to expand, you wanted to keep it on-premise, but you wanted to expand it to include those national corporations and franchises, that would be 125,000. So that's where we're coming up with a cost estimate of really 100,000 to 135,000. And that 100,000 got increased by 5,000 because we moved Jamison over to that other slide, that other category, so. Next slide, please. Phil, can you move us to the next slide? I think maybe Phil is frozen. Can you hear me, guys?
Yes.
Okay. I think we lost.
Yeah, we can. I don't see Phil on, so I'll be.
You will rejoin. So the next, you don't have this slide in front of you on the screen, but you do have it on electronically, I sent it over to you a little bit ago. This is option four, which is a gift card program. And the idea behind this is to really try to support our businesses by having people come in and frequent the businesses. So we would suggest distributing them throughout the community. The board could set the funding level at any level that they so choose. We're suggesting that it be approximately $1,000, the board certainly could change that dollar amount. And Phil, we're on slide number 18, if you've got it. Any questions about the gift card program?
Peggy, Peggy, what is that $1,000, what are you saying, $1,000 total, or?
Correct. We would buy $1,000 worth of gift cards.
Okay, so maybe $10 for $20?
Right. Okay. Next slide, please. So these are really the, just as you're thinking, as you're going through your discussion, these are the different options that have been presented to you. The liquor license rebate, the capital expense grant, the operating expense grant, and then a gift card program. And when, if you looked at the total, you know, the highest amount on the, on the range of costs that I gave you, and you totaled them all up, it's about $300,000, roughly.
And Peggy or Nadine, what was the amount that we were talking about at the last board meeting, was it like 260 something?
It was actually 200,000 that we talked about, but I think we said that expenses could range up to about 260,000.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Nadine, I didn't mean to cut you off.
You're fine, you're fine. We had an allotment remaining of 253, approximately.
And I have one question on the liquor license rebate. So are we, that rebate is addressing the 2020 liquor license?
Correct, the 2020, 21, so the license that expires April 30th of 2021. It's the current license that they're operating on.
So Peggy, I have a question. To a point that was made earlier as to how many restaurants can be covered, and also possibly setting up a budget. If we were to set up an amount. Can we combine some of these options, include more than one option?
The board could certainly include, they could choose any or all of these options. And I do want to point out just one, one item that Al raised, is that on the liquor license rebate, we do, if you recall, one of the options, and can we switch to the next slide, I'm sorry. And I don't have, I don't have liquor license on here. So one of the things we talked about with the liquor license was, you, I suggested there are three approaches that you could take. One of them is just to reimburse the independently owned and operated, the other is to reimburse all restaurants. And then the third was to reimburse all on-premise liquor license holders. Now, that all on-premise liquor license holders includes five additional license holders. Two of which are government-owned properties, so it's Village Greens and Southern Bridges. So the board may want to, certainly if you said, we'd like to include all on-premise dining, but not include the government-owned entities, that's certainly something that the board can do as well.
Peggy?
Yes?
I have a question. I'm confused here on the, on the funds that we're talking about here. We've talked about CARES money, we've talked about a DuPage County grant. And I'm just, I'm just not clear on, we talked about putting in for money with the county, I'm all confused on what money are we talking about? Is this CARES money, is it DuPage County money, is it both? Is it neither? Can you, can you help me, can you clarify that?
We're, we're talking all about CARES Act money. So the village has received 1.7, well, for all intents and purposes, the village will receive $1.7 million in CARES Act funding. And so.
From who?
From, well, through DuPage County, from the federal government.
Okay, but what about what happened today then with DuPage County, it just passed something else, right?
DuPage County has, DuPage County was allocated directly CARES Act funding. Some of those dollars were allocated by the county to the municipalities. And other dollars, the county's allocating in other ways. So the two point five million that they allocated to choose DuPage was part of their overall pool of money. They also have additional, they have additional dollars that were allocated to them from the federal government that they have not spent yet, that they have been, in certain cases, in DuPage County, community municipalities have been submitting programs for reimbursement beyond their allocation, beyond their own municipal allocation. They've been submitting programs for reimbursement under what's called a supplemental allocation. So our intent would be, if for example, the board said, let's allocate three hundred thousand dollars of CARES Act funding towards this restaurant program, we would submit that to the county for reimbursement under the supplemental allocation. So that's over and above the one point seven that was submitted to us.
And that would be speculative? We would have no guarantee we'd get that money, is that correct?
That's correct. On the other hand, if the, if DuPage County, and I'm sorry, Al, if you'd like to jump in. If on the other hand, the, the county did not grant that supplemental allocation to us, what Director Lato has said is that we, in terms of hard costs, that the village has actually spent out of pocket on COVID related items is about five hundred thousand dollars. We've received one point seven million in reimbursement. That's all eligible reimbursement, but those were not hard costs. Those were, were being reimbursed for personnel costs. So we essentially have an additional one point two million that came to us beyond the hard costs. So if we were, if we were not to receive the supplemental allocation to reimburse this program, you could pay for it out of that one point two.
Well, yeah, I understand, but I guess, to me, it's a big, big difference whether or not we come up with a program of three hundred thousand dollars that's going to be paid for through a supplemental program through DuPage County versus, we're going to dip into our general fund to pay it. Because we're not exactly flush with cash, and we've got enough budget challenges on our own that are going to be coming up. So, I mean, to me, that makes a big difference as far as how much money I want to devote to this. If it's someone else's money, then yes, I'm more willing to spend it than if it's our own.
Absolutely. That is, that's the purpose of the discussion.
But I guess, can we, if we were to submit, let's say, three hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses from the restaurants to DuPage County, and they say no, I mean, can we go back? Can we make the program with the restaurants contingent upon us getting the money from DuPage County?
Yes, you could submit, this is Nadine, sorry to interrupt Peggy. We should be able to submit to ask if this would be an eligible reimbursable expense. We'd have to check on the timeframe of how quickly we'd get that back, but I believe the turnaround time has been about a week.
Well, so we would be able to get some notification, Nadine, from DuPage County fairly quickly, and whether or not we would get the funding for this?
We could submit a pre-application, so we could see if we would be approved for it. And the turnaround time for other ones that we have done for capital expenses has been about a week. So we could do that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Nadine, is it a week until you get an answer, or a week until you have the money in hand?
A week until you get an answer. I believe it has to go before a committee.
And how long then before the money is available? Assuming it's approved, how long before we actually see this money?
That I don't know. I would expect that we would then submit for reimbursement. But I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, Trusty Blair.
So if we took the money out of the general fund, would we be able then just to, I mean, the restaurants need help now, not two or three months from now. They need help now. So if we took money out of the general fund, is, then we could just replace it?
Yes.
Okay.
And don't forget then, the one point seven is, as you talked about before, one point two of that is actual money that's left over from that one point seven that we had not spent in hard costs.
So we actually have that right now in the general fund?
No, but we, for all intents and purposes, we will get it. We've submitted it for eligible expenses. We did that. We have not, we don't have the dollars, so it's in hand, but we expect them to be here.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, man, Phil, can you go to the next slide? Oh, I'm sorry, you're on the right side. So this is just kind of some decision points as you're having your discussion. I think, I think you're going to have a discussion at this point, but is to kind of decide, do you want to restrict, first of all, on a on premise basis? And then further, do you want to restrict corporate or franchisee eligibility? And then do you want to exclude others who have, or do you want to exclude any restaurants because they have received other funding? Is there a maximum pool that you'd like to set for each grant program? And do you want to address this on a first come, first served basis for the applications? Or would you like to have a deadline based application, and then they're all considered at the same time? So-
Peggy, I, I want, before I make a decision on any of these, I understand we have some restaurant owners that want to speak. I personally would like to hear from them before we make any decisions.
Oh, yes, I think the intent was if the board would like to have a discussion first, you certainly can do that. Phil, it will be managing the comments that we have coming in. So that's board protocols in terms of how we'd like to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
So is it the board's preference at this point to hear from our folks who would like to speak?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
It's fine with me.
Yes.
Phil, would you mind beginning that process, please?
Absolutely, thank you all. Board members, you'll remember this process from how we've done a couple of our previous board meetings when we had some interest from the public in speaking. We do have three attendees with us this evening, and Trevor, Al, I'm assuming that we have nobody there in person this evening? Great. So I'm going to go down the line here. Bring our attendees into the room, and they will have their time. And Attorney Pat, you will be managing that time, I believe, right? Excellent. So the first person joining us this evening is, I'll go by business name. We have Shanahan's Restaurant joining us this evening. And Rich, you should be able to speak now, if you can just confirm you can hear me?
Hey, my name is Rich Moore, can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes, we can hear you.
Rich, before you get going, I just want to let you know you have three minutes. I will let you know when you have thirty seconds left, okay?
Sure, okay.
Okay. It's all yours.
Should I talk? Yeah?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, thank you to the board and the mayor and all the trustees and administrators for all that you're doing. You're truly a business oriented community, and we thank you for that. The past several months have been very trying, not only for our restaurant, for every small restaurant in town. And when I first came to town, there was only fifteen restaurants in town twenty years ago. As you just noted, there's forty nine. We earn all of our money from, not from carryout, but ninety percent, ninety to ninety-five percent of our revenues come from sit down, indoor, outdoor type dining. And so we have been impacted tremendously. They closed down, of course, on, on March sixteenth. We had a lot of expenses that we incurred just getting prepared for St. Patrick's Day, and those expenses carried on for months after, after we had the shutdown. So we were really, really underwater for several months as we began to reopen in May and put up some outside tents. Got better every single week. That we have seen more and more people coming back and sitting outside and enjoying outside dining. We had spent a lot of money to, to be safe, including the sanitation of the inside and outside facilities, all the shields and things of that nature. And we prided ourselves and still do, and the fact that our staff was well trained. We wore masks, we do the things that we are supposed to do. We try to provide a safe environment for our customers to dine at. We seen that business coming back up until about a week or so ago, and we were forced to do otherwise, and our tent had been destroyed by bad weather. So we had to go ahead and lease a tent, and there was very few of them available. So we were lucky enough to get one, but they're very expensive. And so we have one that leased for a month. So when you combine the, the monthly expense that we have just for that, you know, our rent and the tent is significant. It's in the area of seven thousand dollars. So it makes it very difficult for us to, to survive on twenty percent of our revenues right now. People are fearful of going out, and of course, we, there's several ways of looking at this in terms of people, you know, wanting to stay home until COVID is cured, and others want to say, listen, we want to support small business, and, but we want to support those who are safe. So we're, of course, in that camp, and we do need some help, there's no question about it. We do need help, Mariana-
Thirty seconds, Rich, thirty seconds.
Right away, as compared to two or three months from now, I think most restaurants have a couple of weeks of reserves, and I think that's about where we're at right now, two or three weeks. And we're waiting for some plans to come in. Of course, we applied for the thing from DuPage County today. And we may have to close down and wait till this thing passes by. So that's kind of where we're at. We thank you for all of your attention, and we hope that we can put together something that would aid us in our time of need. Thanks.
Time's up. Good timing.
Alrighty, the next restaurant we're going to bring along to speak, I believe, is, Anna, I believe, from Jam and Jelly. So let's see here. Anna, I'm inviting you into the room. See. Looks like we may be having some difficulty on your end. And I'm going to need you to unmute yourself and confirm you can hear me. Anna, can you hear me? Okay, I'm going to come back to you. It looks like we're having some difficulty. What I will say is, we do have a Q and A functionality available in this meeting tonight. So if you do continue to have microphone difficulties, please do feel free to write the message to us, and we'll read it in, so that the trustees can hear it. And the, the other restaurant joining us today this evening is Aurelio's at Seven Bridges. So Anna, I believe you're on the line, can you hear me? You may need to unmute yourself.
Actually, we have nothing to say. Sorry about that.
Nope, no problem. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Give a-
Phil, you want to take your, another crack at Anna?
I am. I'm seeing her hand raised. I think we may have a microphone issue, though. Anna, can you hear us? I can see you're in the room.
Phil, if not, if you'd like, she could call my line, and I can put my phone on speaker.
That's, that's exactly what I was just thinking. Anna, do you, Peg, does she have your number?
No.
Great. I will, I'll email her. Anna, if you can hear us, I'm going to email you now with Peggy's number, so you can give us a call.
In the meantime, are there any questions that the board had?
One quick question. How long would it take to get the auditor hired and in place if we decide on what we want to do, where it would require the auditor?
That would be relatively quickly, Trusty Cruz. We should be able to do that within a week or so.
Nadine?
Yeah, yes.
What, what exactly would the auditor's role be? For which component of these different proposals that we're looking at?
We would be looking, other than the refund of the liquor license, any of the grants, applications, they would be handling that part, the administration of those, because of the documentation that would be required and the level of involvement of staff. So liquor license rebate, we could do that in-house.
Okay, thank you.
Nadine, I have an additional question. The supplemental funds that we're going to apply for from the county, are they first come, first served?
I would expect that they are, yes. Administrator Stoneage, I don't know if you know anything different than that, but I believe that that's how it is working.
Yes, Trusty Page, it's a good question. I think that is kind of how it's working, but I, we have to confirm that.
So the sooner we get this done, and you could go to them for preapproval, the better.
Yes, that's accurate. I mean, depending on the direction tonight, we would go to them tomorrow, and, you know, we could frame out what the proposal is and see if we can get at least an initial temperature from them, or at least an ETA on when we would hear back from them. And they may have follow up questions, right?
Okay, so- No, no one is speaking right now. We have Anna from Jam and Jelly on the line. Anna, you can go ahead and start speaking.
Anna, before you start speaking, you'll have three minutes, and I'll let you know when you get down to thirty seconds left, okay?
Okay.
Great. Now you can go.
Thank you so much, everybody, for being there, for thinking of us, the small, you know, restaurant business owners. I know many of you, if not all of you, and I appreciate you considering helping us. I want to say that we do have a very hard time. We're a breakfast lunch place, seven to three. We were closed for two and a half months. We opened up the first of June. I only had fourteen tables to work with for a whole month, up until June twenty sixth that they allowed us to open up the inside. I could not afford to rent a tent, or tables, or chairs in order for me to utilize my parking lot without knowing what to expect, and also knowing how much money the tents and the chairs and tables would have cost us. We only worked with fourteen tables outside for a month, and then fifty percent on the inside, July and August, and then slowly, slowly, we were able to, you know, use more of our indoor seating. All of our sales, ninety-five percent, is from sit down indoor seating. We don't have a big carryout. We just, actually with the pandemic, signed up for DoorDash, GrabHub, and Uber Eats. We didn't have that prior to COVID nineteen, just to help and get some money. We did spend quite a few monies. Anybody would come in the restaurant now, they will see that we've put up fiberglass separators between all our tables, main wall separating the restaurant in twos. We did everything, and we tried to do everything we can to the safety of our customers, the well-being of our customers, and my employees. I have eighteen people working for me, families that depend on this restaurant to pay their bills, including my own family. I had to shut down the indoor dining today because we felt since they shut down Cook County, we need to shut down too, even though we were open for a couple of days. But our safe, the safety of our customers comes first. But we're not going to be able to survive this if we don't get any help. And I was just so upset to find out that I missed the DuPage grant by half an hour because I went to apply for it at four thirty, and the applications were already done. So we have nothing coming our way, and not knowing how long this will take. And we would appreciate any help that you can give us.
All right. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
And board members, that does, we've gone down the line of everybody who had registered to speak this evening.
Well, thank you all very much, and thank you, Rich and Anna.
And, uh, I know that Aurelio's has also had joined us. We, we thank you very much for being here with us this evening. Now, if we could please, um, we'll move to comments and questions and kind of walk through. So Administrator Stonage, maybe you could help or, um, Assistant Village Administrator Halick with regards to questions, but we'll have conversation first and then we'll go to the actual questions that we need to answer. Um, but first of all, on behalf of Woodridge, all of our neighbors, all of our businesses, um, the Village Board, myself, we cannot thank you for all the diligence in preparing all of the information that you have shared with us and that we have before us. Um, the research and extra, um, you know, outreach that you've done has, has just truly made an enormous impact and difference. And on behalf of all of us, we thank you all so much for your diligence and great care. Um, now I'm going to reach out to my fellow board members and ask, um, for further comments or questions that you may have. So I'm going to open it up, please, to the Village Board.
I'd like to make a comment just in regards to, I guess, my train of thought and, uh, for this CARES Act money or, or options that we have. To me, it's always important to explain why the village is going in a certain route. And so, uh, based on the options that we were given tonight, I think that the liquor license rebate, it, it just makes the most sense from my perspective. Just in the fact that, uh, money was paid to the village by these businesses and we have the ability now to give back that money. Uh, it's just a little bit cleaner than some of the other options, I think. Uh, it has a fixed cost and there's no reason for an auditor. And, and so just based on those reasons, that's kind of, uh, the option that I'm, uh, leaning towards at this moment.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Yes.
Trustee Hendricks, did you have any perspective in terms of who would be eligible for the rebate for the liquor license? Would it be on on-premise?
Correct. So the, the 60% I think is, makes the most sense. And then I would say, from, for me, it's just equity, uh, to be equitable. If we're going to reimburse one person, we should do everyone. So I would go with, with all, um, uh, restaurants that have 60% of their revenue coming from dining, including the national brands.
Okay. But not the other on-premise liquor license holders, including Hollywood, Bolero, BobaX and the golf courses?
No, it would be for, it would be across the board.
Okay. So all on-premise liquor license holders. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
I would be, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Trustee Paige.
Okay. I am comfortable with limiting our programs to non-corporate entities, whichever program we decide. Um, I'd like to see us go probably in two directions. Um, supporting the returning of the liquor license funds because I believe that's something we can do quickly. I would take out the government entities. So the two golf courses in which technically feasibly, the government could receive some kind of profit or revenue, I would say those are not eligible for liquor license. I am leaning toward option three, but increasing the amount of eligibility for the grant. The reason being, many businesses, when they were forced to shut down on March 16th, continued to pay, pay payroll because they believed they would open within two to three weeks instead of it being months before they were able to reopen. I think also if we inclu- increase eligibility, we could also increase the amount as well as who's eligible. We could cover things like the tents and the tables and the heaters. So I would increase the amount, I'm just throwing this number out there, maybe 10,000 as the most somebody could apply for, but ensure that they could include payroll as well as tents and utilities and heaters and propane and the different things we heard about.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So you're essentially combining option two and three into one program with a $10,000 limit and only, um, non-corporate, non-franchises are, are eligible to participate?
Yes, I'm leaning in that direction.
Are you including also option one, the liquor?
Y- yes. I would also include option one of, that's a quick influx of cash without an application that we can give to many of these businesses who, with what happened on Friday, are just devastated. But for the government entities.
Okay. So basically you're going option one, two, and three.
Combine two and three, Trustee Martinez.
All right. So the, I tend to agree with you. Uh, but, uh, the problem I have is that there is a couple of, uh, call them, um, chain restaurants that are excluded from this that have done a lot of work on behalf of trying to take care of the public, such as Carrabas and Baker Square, among others. And I will hate to exclude them uh, because they're part of a chain type restaurant. So I will concur with you, but I will, uh, ask what the impact would be if we add some of those other restaurants. And I know that if we add Carrabas and Baker Square, we got to add, uh, two or three or four more.
Well, um, let me just clarify. If you are, if you are including all restaurants and not limiting it based on on-premise dining, then 49 restaurants would be eligible.
Uh, no, I was going with, with the thought that, uh, we will have, um, a limited amount of restaurants. I thought we were doing the 60% and I guess it's not what we're talking about here.
That's why I wanted to clarify. Trustee Paige, I don't believe was suggesting limiting it based on 60%.
I'm not sure about that percentage. It seems kind of arbitrary. I couldn't say if we just said 51% and a majority of their funds come from in-house dining, but I do believe that there should be that in-house dining criteria. I also believe we should work from a pool of money. So if we say combine option two or three and our pool is $200,000, we should work from a pool of money.
Very good. I, that was my misunderstanding. So Trustee Martinez, that would add in five restaurants if you included, um, the corporate and franchises.
Right. And I go back to what I said a while back. We need to come up with the maximum. How we get to it, I really don't know. But we can, I think this is the type of things that we got to work backwards. Uh, if our maximum is $250,000, how much can we give to each one of these, uh, restaurants so they at least receive something on behalf of the village?
Well, let me just, and, uh, you all probably know by now, I am not good with math, but I can do that math. So if there was a pool, if there was a maximum amount of $10,000, we have 25 restaurants that would be eligible, that would be $250,000. Um, in addition to that, you'd have the liquor license, um, which I think based on what has been suggested, um, we are, that would be about $62,000. So you're looking at roughly between the liquor license and the grant program, you're looking at about, um, uh, I'm washing myself now. You're looking at about $300,000.
And I would be okay with that. But we still have to do the homework.
And based off of what was said to us, we don't think, there will be some businesses, of course, that do apply for the max of 10,000. There will be other businesses who we think will have less or because we're looking at option three, almost everybody qualifies.
Without a doubt, everyone will qualify for all 10,000.
Okay. Peggy, I, I think we need to limit it to the, the 60% or whatever percent is decided. I like the idea, Trustee Paige, combining two and three. And I also like to get the license rebate out to these restaurants as fast as we can. Um, realizing that the other may take a little bit longer, especially if we have to bring in an auditor. Um, I'm good with like the 10,000 or the 10, but I, I honestly, I would be willing to go higher. Um, when you look at these businesses, if we lost these businesses, the, the loss of sales tax and revenue, um, to the village would far outweigh what we're giving them. So, I mean, I would be okay with the 15. I know that probably brings us up to $350,000. But, um, um, that's just my, my opinion where I'm at.
Okay. So you, you support the combination of two and three with a maximum award of 15,000?
Yeah. I mean, if everybody wants 10, that's okay. But honestly, I'd like to see us go a little bit higher, um, to help them as much as we can and also reimburse the liquor license.
Okay.
Just to make sure we're on the same page, it's 25 restaurants qualify if we did non-corporate. Am I right with the 25?
25 qualify if we do 60%. All restaurants with 60, including corporate.
Okay. Now, Peggy, that doesn't include BobaX. I mean, they're not really a restaurant. They're a reception hall. So.
It does not include BobaX. BobaX would only be eligible to receive the liquor license rebate.
Okay. And then it does not include anything at Seven Bridges. We're eliminating government, correct?
Bridges and Village Greens would not be eligible for any rebate of any kind.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
But how about Carrabas?
They're in there.
Be eligible for the liquor license under, under what's being described. Carrabas would be eligible for the liquor license rebate and a rebate somewhere between 10 and 15,000 dollars, depending on what the board sets a limit at.
I'm with you, Peggy. Math is not my strong suit, but if we said 25 times 15, we're looking at $375,000 just combining option two and three.
I think that's probably correct.
And then we need to add in the liquor's license. And I think you said that was 62?
Correct.
I hope so. So that would be $437,000 for those, for what we're discussing.
Correct. I'm just doing Excel really quick.
Director Leto, turn around.
$437,000.
Okay. Correct.
Peggy?
Yes.
Um, I, I had a question. So is there a limit to the amount we can request DuPage County to reimburse?
I don't believe that there is.
Okay. Well, see, I guess my concern is, I mean, I almost think we should look at this from a two-tiered standpoint. Um, if it's going to be only our money coming out of a general fund, I am willing to commit to less dollars than if we're getting it from DuPage County. I'm not quite sure how we can, we can try to work that, but just kind of general, my general thoughts is I think it should be restricted to the, uh, majority dine-in, the 60% or more from dine-in. I would say, um, for any pools of money that we create, I would be in, I would not be in favor of first come, first serve. I think that's just isn't, I don't think that's real fair.
No.
Um, I would, I would prefer instead that in those situations that we would give people a certain period of time to submit their, their, their application and then we would deal with it going forward. Regarding the various proposals, I agree that, um, the $2,600 liquor license should be, uh, reimbursed um, to everyone other than government entities. Um, as far as options two and three, I, I think the better route to go would be to separate those two, keep them separated. If, I think businesses that went out of pocket, dug deep to put out a tent or space heaters or whatever they did, I, I don't, I think they should be, uh, I don't know if rewarded is the word, but, uh, recompensed. They, they, they took a risk. They spent their own money to try to keep their, their restaurants afloat. And I think that deserves special consideration by us. Um, so I would like to see option two and three separate. You know, and I'm not sure how exactly we would tweak that. Um, depending on what kind of numbers, I guess my issue with numbered with option two is the description says grant program to reimburse up to a maximum of $15,000 for capital expenses. But, but the estimated cost is only 50 to 90,000. Is that because some people would be significantly below the 15,000?
That's correct. But again, that is, that's just an estimate, but based on what we've seen, what we can see, right? So there may be capital expenses that restaurants incurred that we don't see. But in terms of the, what we're seeing outdoors and what restaurants have told us that they've spent, there are a, a few who would qualify for the full 15,000. Um, but our best estimate is that others expended some dollars, but, but they were not, uh, nearly that extensive.
Okay.
But again, I would say if you, if you, if you go down that road, I would set a pool so that you know how many dollars you're expending. The approach that has been suggested by Trustee Paige and Martinez and Blair, we already know what the total, um, allocation would be. Um, but under the program, the, under the separated two and three, we don't. Uh, and so I would suggest you set a limit.
Yeah. And I, and I would be in favor of that. I think it's very important to set a limit, set a pool of money and then distribute it on a pro-rata basis. But I guess, is that, is there anything else you need from me?
We would just, I would just need to know what the pool amount is.
Um, I mean, can we make it depend upon whether it's coming out of our general fund or whether we're getting from DuPage? Because I, I'm not in favor of spending $450,000 out of our general fund to, for, for this program, but if we were going to get $450,000 from, from the county DuPage for this, then I would be. I mean, to me, we're dealing with some very large numbers here. And to me, it matters whether it's coming out of our general fund or if it's coming from DuPage County. Again, I'm not sure how we can, if we can make it dependent, can we make some of this, like for instance, the liquor license be something that we pay out regardless of whether we get it reimbursed from DuPage County? But the other options two and three be dependent upon the money coming from DuPage County? I don't, I'm not sure how to make that workable or if it is workable. But to me, there's a big difference in how much money I'm willing to spend and how large I'm willing to make those pools and whether or not it's our money or DuPage County money.
Well, we certainly, I think as Director Leto suggested, we could put in a pre-application. It, it just, um, stalls the program a little bit in terms of, of when we could, uh, roll it out.
Again, and I don't want to get the hopes, I, I don't want to get the hopes up of, I mean, if we're going to make a contingent on DuPage County money, we need to obviously make that clear to the restaurants. So they, they aren't counting on, counting the dollars. That's all I have.
Um, I'm, I'm in favor of the, um, liquor license fee rebate with the exception of the two governmental units. And I kind of tend to agree with Trustee Abbott. And, um, we have several restaurants, not all of them by any means, who did go over and above and trying to make sure that they were, um, able to continue in business and put up tents and all the rest of that. So I would be, um, looking at something along the lines of $100,000 for option two as the cap with up to $15,000 expend, uh, as a maximum per establishment. And then I would be okay with then option three, just giving 5,000 to all of the rest of the eligible restaurants. And then I would be okay with then option three, just giving 5,000 to all of the rest of the eligible restaurants. Because I'm also thinking that it, as you, you know, that will also be a fixed number. So we would have the cap there. And I guess to trustee Abbott's point about is it going to be DuPage County money or our money? If I understand this correctly, our COVID fixed costs were about half a million dollars. We're still going to get another 1.2 million from the county, which while it's nice that we can fill the budget hole with that, at the same time, it is money from the county. So if we are using whatever portion we're using of that, technically it's CARES Act money.
Correct, trustee Kruse.
Okay. So I'm okay with that on my, that would be, and that's just the way I feel about that. So I would do the 5,000 for operating expenses, do the up to 15,000 with a $100,000 cap, and then the liquor license refunds or rebates as soon as possible.
Can I ask a clarifying question for both trustees Kruse second and Abbott?
Yes.
Are you, are you limiting eligibility to one of the grant programs? Or would a restaurant only be eligible for either grant two, option two or option three, or are they eligible for both?
Both.
Yeah, I would say they're eligible for both because it's one is operating and the other is the capital expenditures they had to put out.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I had it right.
Yeah. And I would keep it as in dining, dining only as well. And I don't know if there's, I take it that that's part of what the auditor would be looking at, or is that incorrect?
That, go ahead.
Yes, that's exactly what we would be utilizing them for and reviewing the applications.
Okay. Okay. But in general, the application for option three is going to be pretty straightforward. Yes, we had $5,000 in expenses because we paid rent and we paid electric and we paid, you know, whatever else we have for that.
Correct.
Okay.
And one thing that I agree on is what was said by trustee Abbott. I don't think we should impose a first come, first served. I know that we got a, a timing situation and we need to move forward as soon as possible so we can apply to the county. But we should tell every restaurant, here's the timeframe that you, that we are giving you. Please comply by this, by a given date or something, but not first come, first served.
And just to clarify in terms of that, for the program that, sort of that hybrid program that had been proposed of combining two and three, you would just set the pool and that pool would allow for full reimbursement of all 25 restaurants. And so it wouldn't be restricted on a first come, first served basis because you'd have enough money to fund all eligible restaurants.
Okay.
Yeah. And I would, I would agree with that. And but even on option two, if we were to not do the hybrid one and we did option two, then I would say it still wouldn't necessarily have to be first come, first served. But if we ended up with expenses over the $100,000 that were being applied for, then I would just do it on a prorata basis, based on what each restaurant said that they needed to be reimbursed for.
And trustee Abbott, are you in agreement on that?
Yes.
Administratively, I don't know if it's cleaner to keep the program separate, but I'm trying to do a little quick math here. I could go with option two with a pool of $100,000. And then option three, hold on, with a pool of, let's say, 180,000, but upping the amount people could apply for to 7,500.
So what would that, let's see, so that would be 280 and 6340?
About 340. About 62.
So again, working backwards, set up a total budget and see how we can do it.
So $7,500 would be 187,500. So if you set a pool at 287,500, that would allow for up to 100, a grant, option two, pool of $100,000 and $7,500 for operating expenses under grant option number three.
Then if you add in the 62, I'm getting 349. Someone check my math.
That sounds about right. And I would, yeah, and I would also be okay with, I would not, because one of the questions you had asked Peggy was if they had gotten other support, would we not let them apply here? I would, I would not hold that against them. I think they can get all, they should get all the support they can.
Okay.
I agree.
And just to confirm the, the pool dollars, it looks like you're going to be right at about 350,000 dollars. In total for all three programs.
That, Peggy, that does not include the liquor license then. So we have to factor that in.
That does, that does. What it does not include is the gift card program. So if there were thoughts on, but that's a fairly nominal amount.
Who would we give the gift cards to? Is there, and I don't know if this is something we partner with the school district on. Could we do it with, you know, kids or families that receive free or reduced lunch? I don't have a problem with buying the gift cards, but I don't want to be given a gift card. I'd rather somebody who really needs it gets the gift.
Trustee Paige, I can feel that one too. I mean, that was one of our ideas as staff too, as we partner with some of our sister agencies. You can do community competitions. Recall earlier this summer, we had some random drawings through some competitions. The library did a few of them as well. But we can certainly do that with the school districts to your idea. We can donate X amount to the local food pantry and they can distribute them to families in need. It's, it's kind of, you know, at the board's discretion of how you want to. We can come back with some options for you if you'd like.
On that, I, I'm not in favor of the gift card program. I don't think it's good for the government to decide who's going to get a gift card and who isn't. I just don't think that's the business we should be in. So I, and to me, for a thousand dollars, this is not going to make a difference to any of the restaurants. So I, I'm against the gift card program.
Mayor, we have never from you yet.
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you to my fellow board members. You know, we've spent a lot of time on this and it is a lot to think about. Businesses have been impacted significantly and every business has been impacted significantly. I have spoken with many businesses and business owners and they are struggling every day. And, you know, I am thankful for their dedication and commitment to our community and doing everything that they can to keep their business up and running and serving our neighbors. So just in taking all of the information, first of all, I am in favor of every option. I think the liquor license fee rebate is something we definitely should do. Option two, the grant program to reimburse for actual capital expenses. My concern is the $15,000 is maybe a little light. And just, you know, hearing from businesses, I don't have a good gauge on what some of the businesses that really went and put up outdoor seating and tents and heaters and everything else. I, I just would want to be sure that we are really helping because we're now, you know, at a phase where our restaurants are closed inside, except, you know, their outdoor seating is available. They're open for carryouts, but I'm, I'm just not sure. So I, I maybe would like to recommend maybe $25,000. Because those are hard expenses and if they're leasing equipment, et cetera, they're paying that now. They'll pay it through till, you know, February, March. I mean, gosh knows. So it's just something that, you know, I'm kind of driven by those amounts might be shy of maybe what might be needed. The COVID modification operating expenses, again, I am definitely in favor of that. I'm just not sure that 5,000 would help us get through March, April, May. Then they were able to be open for a couple of months, you know, October, part of October, November, maybe, and December, question mark, and then who knows? So I, I just, I, I don't know what to recommend on that, but it is something to think about. As well as I do like the gift card program. We did some really nice outreach to our residents and had people participating in kind of a fun, you know, program that got people involved and then they were able to get a gift card to one of our local restaurants. So it's win-win because our neighbors, whether they were students or, you know, our seniors or other neighbors that sent in their best quote to get through, you know, the times that we're in. For example, that was one program that we had and, you know, it was done very well and it was well received. So I, I don't know that a thousand dollars is enough there, but I would recommend maybe 5,000 on the gift card program. And, and that may be high. I, I don't know. But to me, the more win-win we can build from now to the end of the year and maybe into the new year, I think the better off we will all be. I would say a pool of a total of $500,000 for all of the options would be what I would recommend. And at least open it up to have my fellow board members consider. I just am thinking maybe some additional dollars may help our businesses get through the next few months, which are going to be difficult anyway because of the pandemic environment. So. I would not include governmental entities. I also question the 60% on in premise dining. I understand why we have that. I'm just not sure. It should be 60%. I think trustee Paige might have mentioned maybe 51%. I'm not sure. I don't want to, I'm trying to go off of memory, trustee Paige. But that may be a better number, but I'm not sure what of a difference it'll actually truly make. But like I said, I just really believe every restaurant and every business has been, you know, impacted. So the liquor license rebate, option two, increasing to 25,000. Of course, you know, that's a reimbursement amount. And then option three, grant program reimbursement for maybe 10,000 versus the five. And then I do like the idea of building win-win and doing the gift cards, especially working with our other entities and going to 5,000 total. Oh, and just hoping it all helps significantly.
Mayor, was there a percentage? Did you, are you suggesting a 51% threshold?
Yes.
And I'm just trying to, to see if there is consensus. Is there consensus in changing, and I'm sorry, I, I heard from trustee Abbott in terms of the gift card. I have not heard from others. But then I'll come back and try to get consensus. So we're, we're kind of all in the same cage and we can come back next week with a program. So if anybody else wanted to. So we're looking, mayor suggesting a $5,000 pool for the gift cards, a $25,000 limit for option two and a $10,000 limit for option three with a 51% threshold on, on premise dining.
Peggy, I, I like the 60%. We, we really need to help the dine-in restaurants more so than the carryout restaurants. I know everybody's hurting, but the carryout restaurants, the dine-in, they're taking the biggest hit. So we really, I think we need to focus on them. I'm not sure about the gift card program. I do like the other three options. I wouldn't have a problem raising some of the, the amounts. I don't know if I'd raise it as much, but I, I wouldn't have a problem raising some of the amounts.
If we, maybe the better question is the $500,000 pool amount. That's something the board is, if I can get just input on that. I'm just trying to run some numbers really quickly to give you a sense for how, how it might work.
I would be uncomfortable right now going up to $500,000. I mean, we can always come back as we see because we don't know yet how long the restaurants are going to be closed down for in this particular period and not allowed to do, to go back into eating inside. But we, it would also give us some time to find out what we may or may not be getting from DuPage County in additional funds. As far as the gift card, I guess I have a question about that. How do we determine which restaurants we're buying the gift cards from? And what about restaurants that may not even have gift card programs?
Administrator Stonehutch, if you could please.
One of the things that we did, just in terms of the programs that the mayor was mentioning before, where we awarded, we've gone through programs, we would award gift cards. We've asked those who are being awarded those gift cards, where they would like it from.
Yeah. That's how we handled, that's how we handled it earlier in the year. But we can come back with some proposals for the board of how we would allocate those dollars and how we would make those selections. But presuming if you carve out a universe that's within this eligibility of these other programs, we could stick with that universe.
Okay. Cause I, I mean, the gift card program, even if it got approved where we said, okay, yeah, let's do it at $5,000. I don't think that that's something, I mean, at this point, I would rather get the other three, if we're going to use three options or two options going, because those seem to have a much shorter timeframe that we can get working on.
And just to answer the question, I'd like to stay with the 60% for dine-in. 500,000 to me is a big jump. And I'm all for helping the restaurants. Don't misunderstand me, but there's quite a, quite a big jump. So I may be willing to consider going up another 50 to 400,000, but it would be up to 400,000. That doesn't mean we're going to spend it. It could be 390 by the time we're done. But 60%, yes, I think that's important. As to the gift card program, I guess we could have some ideas how to distribute them, but to me, that would be, that's not included in my thinking at this point.
Okay, I've heard from, trustee Paige, I don't know that I've heard from you on the percentage.
Support a lower percentage. I think the more inclusive, the better. But again, I, I don't know if 51% is the right number. I don't know if it's 55%. I think I would need to know how many more business, businesses become eligible if I dropped it to 51% versus 60%. Because if somebody's on the cusp of 58%, but we set the criteria at 60%, that to me is, that's a problem. I can support the gift card program having a higher amount only if I know those cards are going to people in need. I don't, if, if somebody can afford their own carryout, then I don't want to give them a gift card when I know there's another family going hungry.
Thank you. And trustee Paige, I, I completely appreciate what you're asking in terms of trying to determine what that percentage should be. Until, until somebody submits their information, we won't know. And, and as I said, these are just our best guesses and I don't even know that they're very good best guesses. So we, just in terms of trying to set the percentage, we, we won't know where people are until they submit.
What timeframe are we looking in for dine-in? What timeframe are we looking in for dine-in? So are we saying 60% in 2019?
Correct.
Okay.
Peggy?
Yes.
Just feedback on that. I'm in favor of the 60%. I fear, I mean, the whole idea is to help the restaurants that were hurt the most by the closing. And if you're doing 50% of your business by takeout, you're not going to get hurt as much as someone who's getting 5% of their business from takeout. So, I mean, to me, we, the the lower you make that threshold, the less targeted of a program this is. And I want this to be targeted to the in-dining, the dine-in restaurants that were that were essentially, you know, reduced to virtually no income due to the shutdown. If someone's making 49% on takeout, they were able to survive a lot better than a restaurant that was doing 5% takeout. So I'm in favor of staying at the 60%. I'm not comfortable going up to the $500,000 limit at this time. I think that's all the feedback you need from me.
So you're supportive of the $350,000 pool?
Yes.
I'm sorry. And yes, I think I've got everything from you. Trustee Martinez or trustee Hendricks? Just increase it.
I'm okay with the 60%. I don't know that it would make a big difference, even if it went down to 51% and we wouldn't know anyway until after they do the applying. And I'm more comfortable at this point at keeping it at the approximately $350,000 level. And then if we cap, if we need to, after we see what's going on, much like we didn't do anything back in April, but once we see what the situation is, we can come back if we need to and look at further relief and what we might be able to do at that point.
Okay, and gift cards, trustee Crusick?
Um, again, well, I'm not necessarily in favor of them, but if if it ended up being that, I mean, for $1,000, I would definitely not be in favor of it because I don't think that does much of anything. So if we did go up to 5,000, I guess I would be okay with that. But I'm not as concerned of getting that underway today as I am with making sure that we have the more the more important things that are really going to put money into the business owners' hands going as quickly as possible. So I can support it, but I'm not sitting here saying, oh, yeah, we have to do that right away.
Okay, thank you. I think I just need to hear from trustee Blair and trustee Hendricks at this point.
I thought I already.
I'm sorry, trustee Blair, I have you down as 60% for the percentage.
Correct.
In terms of the the pool, the total pool.
We're set at what, 350, correct right now?
Well, there there's one suggestion of 350 and there's another suggestion of 500.
I'm okay with the 350. I would be willing to go up to maybe 400. I'm not sure about the gift card program. I don't think $1,000 is going to do much of anything. And to trustee Cruz's point, you know, how do you determine which establishments you're going to buy it from? I I just don't think it's going to have that big of an impact. I'd rather put extra money into these other three options, the liquor license and option two and three.
Okay, thank you. And trustee Hendricks?
So just my train of thought on this whole exercise, I guess, that we're doing. As an elected official, I just, to me, I just don't feel comfortable taking tax dollars and then choosing who gets the tax dollars. And so that's why initially I chose option one. Just because that was money that was received from the businesses and then we're basically just giving that money right back to the businesses. It gets a little muddy when we do start to determine who gets what funds and what are the requirements to get the funds and all the hoops that you have to jump through. I'm just not sure if it's our our place to do that. With that being said, obviously, COVID is a extenuating circumstances. So I guess the long and short of it is, I would agree with the 60% for any businesses that would receive any funds. The gift card program I would probably not agree with and the higher $500,000 pool, I definitely would not agree with.
Okay, so I'm seeing a consensus around liquor license rebate for all on-premise license holders with the exception of the government-owned facilities, specifically the golf courses. I'm seeing options, option two and option three, based on a 60% on-premise inclusive of corporate. And under option two, a $15,000, I'm sorry, under option two, up to $15,000 reimbursement with a maximum pool of $100,000. Under option three, I think what I was hearing was 7,500, but we also had a 10,000. And I apologize because I didn't ask for feedback on that specifically.
I think the 7,500 is where we got the 350.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. Yes. And then I think maybe there's a suggestion that we come back at a future point, see if there's additional dollars that need to be allocated under sort of either option two or option three, based on what is happening to potentially increase that pool from 350 to something higher, somewhere between 450 and 500. And that, there seems to be just inconsistent perspective on the gift cards. And I think to to administrator Stoneage's suggestion, maybe we come back and give you some ideas in terms of how that program might work. Because we just, you're sort of split in terms of in terms of where you are in that. So maybe if we can give you a little bit more, a few more ideas in terms of that, we can get some, get some consensus on that one way or the other. Am I understanding that correctly? Trustee Blair?
I just have a question. If we're, it sounds like we're going with the 350, correct? Okay. Now, will the auditor's fee have to come out of that or will, can that be over and above the 350? Because that's going to make a difference.
That would be over and above that amount.
Okay, okay. And how quickly can we get some of this going?
I think the liquor license rebates we can do fairly quickly. I'm not going to speak for Nadine, but I would think by the end of next week.
We're hoping to try, we're going to try to do it actually by the end of this week.
Okay, and then on the other two programs, are we going to have to wait until we hear from the county or is it something we can go forward with?
My understanding, based on the feedback that has been given, the board was, with the exception of trustee Abbott, was supportive of moving forward with that. Quickly, I shouldn't say quickly, moving forward with that and then maybe simultaneously submitting it to the county, but not waiting for the county response.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I was hoping for. Okay, thank you.
I do just want to clarify with attorney Pat, and please, I want to make sure that I, I'm telling you what I heard and I want to make sure that I'm accurately reflecting what you said. And I do also want to hear from attorney Pat to make sure that he is comfortable with us moving forward with a rebate on the liquor license prior to the board, prior to the board actually taking formal action at a board meeting. We certainly ratified it after that. But let me, let me just consult attorney Pat for that.
Yeah, so based on the direction tonight, I am comfortable with that, provided that the board ratifies those actions at the next board meeting.
And is there anything that I have misconstrued or not reflected back accurately in terms of the board's direction?
Not that I know of.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to administrator Stoneage.
I will turn it back over to mayor Cunningham. Mayor Cunningham, if I may, what I, what staff will do is, so if we hear the direction tonight, we will cut the checks for the liquor license as defined tonight, this Friday, coming Friday, that's going to be our goal. We'll get notifications out to those businesses. And then we will follow up on the November 5th board meeting, which is next week with a resolution or an ordinance that will reflect what you've described here tonight. Mayor Cunningham, I think you're muted.
And if there's nothing further, thank you very much, administrator Stoneage. With no further business to discuss this evening, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Trustee Hendricks?
Thank you, trustee Hendricks. A second, please.
Second, trustee Blair.
Blair, all those in favor, please sign aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. It is 8:02 PM. Thank you all.